All right. Good evening, everyone. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardson Board of Selectmen will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for more participation by members of the public and or parties of the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website. No in-person attendance. Members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via Zoom. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite our best efforts, we will post on the town's website a comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting, and we have been posting every meeting that's happening on Zoom on our YouTube channel.
Okay, thank you. We are in open session now with an open meeting. Is anyone here for open session attendee wise? I don't see anybody. Is any chat chatter?
No, no emails, nothing.
Okay, let's move on then. So we, we don't have any announcements shown there, but Katie, you want to just give us an update on sort of the, the status of schedule on the, the light fight and lighting and whatnot?
Yeah, the light fight, um, we are scheduled for the first three weekends of December, so we're adding an extra weekend this year. Um, so I'm thinking there's not going to be a whole hell of a lot going on, um, for activities for people to do, and this is a night family oriented one. So we're going to add a weekend and we are also pushing the hours on back to five to nine compared to last year it was five to eight. So we've added an hour every night. Um, so I'm taking applications right now for entries and I'm also rounding up sponsors. The flag should hopefully be switched out within the next couple of weeks. But yeah, and then we'll be adding to the common as well. I did hear back from the church about doing anything on the church and right now I understand it's a no for the church due to some unforeseen circumstances. That's just, it's not going to work, but we can add some to the common. So that will be good. Um, and I figured out places to store all that stuff too as well. So, uh, that being said, if you want to join in the fun, entries, the, all the forms and everything are available on the Facebook page, if, uh, excuse me, on the website and links will be on the Facebook page as well. Soon I'll be creating events and if you can't find it, I will gladly email it to anyone that would like to enter.
Okay, thank you. And we had, um, so Halloween, uh, happened. I convinced my 14 year old at like six forty, um, to throw on her Lama costume and we went out there. And she made out because there were not that many people, like nobody left and people were just shoveling candy at her or basically saying from the bowl, just take it all, take it all. So, you know, we had our probably last, um, but, but it looked like earlier in the day, saw a few pictures that people were out and about. So that was good to see at least, uh, you know, we didn't, uh, you know, ignore Halloween and the kids could, could get what they could out of it. So that was, that was good to see. Okay, moving on, we have presentations. So you want to do the risk, the, the quarter one financial report Ryan before COVID stuff, or do you want to just get ready into COVID? It's up to you.
Uh, we should probably start with COVID.
Sounds good. All right. So we will move ahead with that.
Okay. So I just want to show the board. There's a, a lot of info came out today, so I'm just going to flood you with current, current COVID information. Tonight I'll be updating all the town websites and pushing this information out tomorrow. So first on Friday, we got notification or Thursday is when the data comes out that we are currently a red community. So I just want to explain that to you what that means. So here is the community level data map for the state of Massachusetts. So here are all the towns as they currently stand. So a red case, a red town means you have greater than eight cases per 100,000 residents. So it seems like a really small number, especially since there's not many cities in, in Massachusetts that have more than 100,000. So a lot of small towns with little pop-ups of cases will go red. So here you have Hubbardston. So we have had 16 cases total, and the reason why we went red in this data report was our two week case count. That 16 includes the six that happened in the last two weeks. So, um, there's more data from Hubbardston than 2,100 tests. In the last 14 days, we've had 361 tests, uh, with the six positives and our positivity rate is 1.66. So data doesn't mean anything without context. So what does that mean for the town? Let me just pop out of screen share. So at any time our cases could fall off, which we are trending in that direction currently, although you might see us go back to a gray community this week is, is my understanding. However, that depends on if there's any more positive tests or how the current tests or, or current positives are trending. We don't release the information of names, but any contact tracing is done through our public health nurse. And of course, um, if they're involved, the school system has, and I walked through it with them on Friday, an extensive contact tracing algorithm in case anything happens there. But I can tell you statewide, the trend has not been positivity from school rates. It has been from, um, private gatherings or, or indoor gatherings is where most of the contact tracing is showing a positive case increases. So for anything to happen to the town of Hubbardson, we would have to be a red community for more than three weeks. So three Thursday reports, which we are at one report right now. Most of it is centered around businesses and large scale businesses moving from phase three, section two, back to section one. Um, there would be almost no impact to Hubbardson in terms of, in terms of businesses. The only thing that I can see from reading through all of the, the documentation and making sure that we're compliant is our library capacity would go from 50% to 40% if we did make that change, which you're talking about one customer or something that we could easily handle and almost nobody would notice. So that is, uh, red communities. Just want to stop there and see if anybody has any questions on that because I know we were in the news a little bit because of that, especially locally.
Now, I just want to say it out loud that eight out of 100,000 is, is eight thousandths of a percent. It's so incredibly small of the, you know, so, you know, it, it is what it is. It's set not by us, but it's such an incredibly small amount. And again, that's not necessarily Hubbardson because we have less than 100,000, but the, the criteria to get to where we're at, which is we're just over at nine point two. It's, 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 it's such a thin hair. It's unbelievable, but is what it is.
Yeah, for small, the way it was explained to me is you want to catch just quick spikes in towns and we're going to go anytime we have a little cluster of cases, we're going to go red. So that's what it's intended to do in small towns, but it is the threshold for us to go red is very, very low. So if we get cases at all, you're going to see this and it's probably going to continue through the winter. So there is that. So I talked to the schools. This is important. So there is no magic number for closing the school. And when I mean closing, I mean going from a hybrid model to remote model. So there isn't a number or a number of weeks in red. It is a decision between the, the district, the board of health and the state education department. So the three of them, whenever there's cases in our school district will meet and discuss what the impact is for, for the communities. So we could be read as we are right now. And I talked to superintendent on Friday, she went through this discussion with all three parties. She talked to the board of health, she talked to the, this, to Desi at the state level, and they went through the cases that exist right now and what is known and, and what they should do with the schools. So they could make a decision right there to go full remote. It could be for a day, which would be, we don't really know what's going on. Let's shut down for a day. It could be for a couple of weeks to see where the cases go, or it could be, you know, a more permanent thing. But it's going to be a collaborative decision. There's going to be some notice for folks and we're not, we're not there right now. So there's going to be no change in school status or anything. But I did kind of want to explain that process and see if the board has any questions about the schools. One thing I did ask was, is there a chance that the elementary school in Hubbardston would close, but other district buildings would stay open? And it was more likely that the, um, high school and middle school would go remote. The elementary school might be able to stay open, but if the elementary schools, um, have to go remote, then all the district would probably be remote. So, uh, that was one of the things we did discuss. So are there any questions on the school side of it or any information that this board wants me to gather?
I guess just about, um, you know, the, the high school and middle school are in Barry, right? So if Barry, so you just talked about the board of health. Obviously that was for Hubbardson Center School. That's what would be applicable to Hubbardston, but in the Barry has five towns that come into it. But, uh, I, I guess I assume that the Barry Board of Health would be who would be consulted along with Desi and, um, the school district, if that were the case, if Barry trended up.
Yes, ours would be involved too though, because it's Hubbardson residents would be moving to general population, just like if Barry, that was a red community, had a large spike in cases. You know, that would impact our community. So the conversations are going to be continual and frequent over the winter for sure. But there's no like one person who decides schools. It's, it's going to be a collaborative discussion and ultimately a district's decision. Okay, so that's schools. All right. The governor came out with additional information today. Some, some stronger restrictions at the state level came out today and they're effective on Friday. So I'm going to share my screen with you. I've tried to find the most condensed version of this, just to present the, the data very simply. I still have to dig through a lot of it because it is very, very new. Let's call that up for you. Okay, so the, um, this is newer. We haven't seen this yet, but at the stay at home advisory has been revised that instructs residents to stay home between 10 PM and 5 AM, except for health groceries, um, and going to work. Or, uh, taking a walk outside. So this, this is new. We're still trying to interpret this at the, uh, the local level, what this means, but the state home advisory does now say that residents are to stay home between 10 and five. I don't want to use the word curfew, but it, it certainly looks like, um, some type of restriction there. So businesses must close at nine thirty. This, and, and none of these businesses really have an impact on Hubbardson, except for liquor sales and, uh, some sporting activities. Most of those are coming to a close. This face covering order is new for folks as well. So anytime you are in a public space, you will be required to wear a face mask. So this would definitely mean town hall. So I'm just talking about our public spaces. This would be in our town buildings for sure. And, um, we're getting clarification on whether it means our parks as well. So we're trying to, to find more information, but the face covering order now doesn't say you don't have to wear it if you're outside of a six feet distance or social distancing. It says any public space you must wear it unless you have an exemption. And then the gathering order, um, was restricted back down again. So this isn't the most restrictive it's been, but it's, it is that second tier. So indoor gatherings are limited to 10 people, which would impact certainly we've had boards clamoring to meet in person and a couple have met. Uh, this is pretty much going to put a stop to that. And, um, private residence gatherings outdoors, anything outdoors is limited to 25 again. So this, this is a cut in half from what it was. And then they must end at nine thirty, which, which we already talked about. So those are the, um, the big changes. There is a, a fine here for violating the gathering order. Again, we want to clarify a lot of this stuff, but I wanted to get this information to you and see what you needed from us in order to clarify or, or ask any questions of the state.
Did they bound this yet? Um, or, or just open ended timeframe wise?
It, it is open ended, uh, directly tied to the rise in hospitalizations and positive cases in the state.
Fabulous.
Okay, so, um, more, more to come on that. Again, if you have anything you want me to, to inquire about, and you should, I mean, the emails are flying as we're trying to interpret a lot of this meetings. Uh, we did anticipate that, you know, with the fall and the, the indoor and the cold weather, that there would be something, some type of increase. So this isn't surprising, but the, the restrictions certainly are, are new. So we need to figure that out. And that is the COVID update, unless there's any more questions.
Don't see any. So thanks for that. I guess we'll move on. Um, want to go to the, the quarter one financial report?
Okay, follow that up for you. So this report is, uh, something we've built the last couple of years in order to allow you to have the information that you need to oversee the town's finances. So it's a succinct measurement quarterly of where we're at. So you can see it and I'll just walk you through some of the highlights here. So this report, continually trying to make it more user friendly for you as our budget versus actual, which is how much we're spending, our revenue, which is how much we're taking in, a report on all of our capital projects, what our finance team is up to and what we're doing to monitor our finances per town policy. So just a couple, uh, things from the world of behavioral economics. If, uh, the indicator is not a concern for you, we marked it green. If it's yellow, that means we're monitoring it. And if it's red, it means something needs to be done about it. You'll see that throughout. Okay. So overall, we've expended 24.4% of our appropriated funds, which would put us at 97.6% of what we said we would spend or approximately 230,000 under, um, where we said we were. So this is where we want to be, especially in quarter one. This is a good number. This means departments are spending about what they're supposed to and, and doing their service levels, but there's definitely an uptick as the year goes on in spending. So it means we're in good shot, good shape. If we were higher than that level right now, we would be concerned or putting some financial restrictions on.
But aren't there some, aren't there some, some early, um, larger expenditures for either insurance or other things that, that, that do happen as well?
Yeah. So the, um, it's a good question. The retirement, retirement, we pay in full in order to get a 1% discount, which you'll see. And then our insurance, we pay in full. So that's approximately uh, 400,000 between the two of them or 350. So that's, those are big expenditures. We also pay a lot of our software costs upfront. So, it does even up, but we do increase spending quite a bit in the spring. So this is where we want to be. We've also offset some of this cost with COVID money, which you'll see. Um, I, I'll need to get that in front of you as well. Anything else before I move on? Okay. So what I've done here in this section is highlighted anything that's over 25%. So you'll see the, actually I'll just bring it down to it now. This is the act, the, sorry, on a different screen. Hold on. One second. Are you seeing the PDF?
No, we're still seeing the, um,
All right. Now you've seen the PDF. So in the, not trying to make everyone dizzy, but this is the actual budget versus actual report. Okay. So in it, this is what we send to all of our departments, boards and committees every month, and it's available on the town website. So these percentages over here is what I'm talking about. When I say they should be under 25% for quarter one. So anything that's not, I explain to you in this financial report. You and the finance committee. So to get back to this. Okay. So selectmen employee support, um, that's from dues. It's something we pay every year and we're always over at this point. So no concern there. Accountant needed a bunch of supplies, so pretty much exhausted her account, but she's only in once a week and we, we don't think she'll need anything else. Assessor support is the same dues and planning services is something we pay in full for, to, to MRPC for their services. So none of those are concerning. Those are normal. Building and maintenance, um, we're always monitoring this account. We did have a big expenditure because of the ceiling. And, uh, we already supplemented that with the finance committee reserve. So we are over appropriation for over the 25% in our building and maintenance services. This covers mostly the police department, the slade building and the basement of the library. However, um, although it needs to be monitored and things can certainly fail again, I'm not worried we'll be over appropriation with this account. A major account of concern is the police department services. So primarily this is used for vehicle maintenance and, uh, almost fully exhausted the fund already 91%, just a lot of, um, vehicle repairs that needed to be made. So if there's no other major vehicle repairs, then this one will be fine. However, um, we don't expect that because things do break. But the police department has, um, underspent in some areas. So we do believe that this overage can be handled within the department unless again, there's something really major.
So do we think that this applies this year because we've spent so much more time policing because of our, um, extension of services due to the CARES Act funding, helping that out? And then this is sort of a byproduct of that?
Um, that's a good question. I'm going to have to get back to you on that one, but I will. I will send you an analysis of miles and certainly could be a cause. I just can't say for sure here.
Yeah, don't go crazy. I'm just wondering.
No, it is, if it's worth looking at for sure, because then we could charge it to COVID. All right. So ambulance, um, these are just fees that are due, nothing concerning there. Emergency management supplies. The emergency management director purchased a Connex and, uh, some shelving, but usually only makes one big purchase a year. So that one should be fine. The senior center paid for their, uh, my senior center software and have been engaging with it quite a bit because it allows them to email folks, which makes sense during a COVID environment. Recreation always spends more money in the beginning and at the end of the year because of the seasons. And then we already discussed the Worcester Regional Retirement and Insurance, which isn't listed here, but should be. The payment to Worcester Regional gives us a $5,000 credit, which is why we pay that one early. Otherwise you'd pay it in two chunks. So that's, that's it on the expense side. Um, we're in good shape. As I said, we're not, um, certainly not overspending. In fact, we're underspending at this point. So I'll stop there unless there's any, if there's any questions about expenses. All right. Hearing none, I'll go right to revenue. So revenue is tracked. Um, I track this monthly, but report on it quarterly. So revenue is Kelly and I worked to break it down by actual level. So let me show you a that looks like that. Okay. So this is how we track our revenue. So anything that brings in money, we track it compared to what we thought we'd bring in and check it for percentages. So this happens to be the final for FY 20 here, but this is the report and a copy of that is in the report that I sent you for quarter one. There's some highlights. We are exactly at 25% of our revenue expectations. Okay. So if this pace was to continue, we would have no return to free cash or we'd be right on pace. So although this is good news, we did decrease our revenue expectations because of COVID. And we do expect to see potential revenue disruption through the winter and early spring. We're already seeing some restrictions and, and stuff from the state. So this will have a financial impact, unfortunately. Um, however, some of our big revenue payments, like our pilot agreements and our excise taxes don't begin until quarter three. So we see 25% as a good number. In fact, this is above where we were last year. So that's good. Um, that is where we're at with revenue. Um, only big things we noticed are the building department is outpacing last year's permit totals already. And a lot more activity there, which is also good for our new growth number. And our ambulance receipts are outpacing last year's total, which again, we can attribute to the increase in hours based off the, the COVID expenditures.
So does that come in? We got recently, sorry, the, the, um, uh, information that it was, or I saw somewhere, maybe social media, whatever it was that the fire department would, you know, the, the most cases or most, uh, um, calls ever, um, does this fall into that?
It does. So the only time we'd get revenue is from any ambulance calls. Uh, we don't get it on the fire side, but we have been very active and that should translate to, to more money. So it's an unfortunate thing. The more you need an ambulance, the more money we collect. But, um, if we're going to provide that service, we, we do try and get reimbursed for it. So I do think there's a correlation there. All right. So that's revenue. Now moving on to capital projects. Uh, I'm not going to go through every capital project unless you want me to, but this report details where we're at. Again, yellow being we've procured it, but we're not quite there. Green, meaning we're in possession and red means we haven't started. So the only ones that are in red at this time, the police department ceiling and repair, this, um, is already scheduled, but it won't be done until April. Police vehicle cameras and servers, this won't be done until the spring. Uh, the bandstand roof on Curtis Field, I actually probably could put this one at yellow at this point because we have selected the contractor and we're just looking to get that scheduled. Slade building paving project, we're currently talking with a, a contractor to see what this might look like, but nothing to report yet. And then the, some of the CPA is, is not really under town control. So those projects, we're just waiting to hear from the various boards that are, they're responsible for them. So that's a report to the, the board and the finance committee. We're in good shape with capital. I think we're tracking every project that we're supposed to and moving where we can. So the end of capital season kind of comes in December and then we pick back up again in the spring for most things. So, um, we should see a little bit of a lull soon.
Are you going to talk about, uh, at, at any point, the, the roof project?
The center school roof?
Yeah.
I can right now. The center school roof, we met as a finance team to talk about what borrowing would look like. And we have everything in place to include the IMA, uh, our financial consultants, our bond counsel. We've organized everything for the borrow and we will be starting to talk about, uh, ramping back up again with a weekly meeting on the, what we're calling our building team. And we have a calendar in place that has procurement starting in March with activity beginning in June. And then we'd start paying for the project in the fall. So we do short-term borrows, finance the project. Once the project's completed, which should be early 2022, January or so, we should get the final audit. Um, you would start seeing payments and the debt exclusion would, would hit that we passed in the spring. Yeah, that project's kicking back up again. Anything else on that then?
No, I just, you know, I guess yes. Um, so a pretty big project for the town. Um, and we, we vetted the, um, owner's project manager and architect and whatnot beforehand pretty severely and probably should stay involved in some capacity, you know, as the work gets closer and then comes into play. So, um, you know, having a board member on the, the building team, um, is probably a good idea. What do you think?
I completely agree. So we'll be meeting every Friday, probably around 10 o'clock for a Zoom meeting. It should be no more than 30 minutes and would love to have a board member there.
All right. Well, I guess, um, if anyone is interested in that, you can either speak now or get back to us. Um, you know, if, if you are, and, um, it could absolutely be more than one, probably shouldn't be more than two, so that we don't have to post a meeting every time, but you know, it's, it's up to us. So, um, I guess, uh, you know, either speak now or, or, you know, get back to us in the next week or so, and then Ryan can, can, can add us to the team.
Well, I've been meeting, I've been, I've been meeting with that group since they started, so that I just soon, uh, I'll stay with it.
I don't know. Anybody got anything to add?
Board's okay with that. I'll, I'll just add Jeff. He's already been voted by this board. So I'll just add him to the meetings and um, I'll include in my town administrator report, an update on this project. Then as you said, it's a big project. So make sure I'm giving a regular update about it.
Okay. When it gets closer to construction, just because that's my world mostly too. And I was involved talking to the owner's project manager, I'll probably readdress this with the board, see if everyone's okay with me sort of getting a little bit more involved when, when we actually get towards construction. So just bringing that up now. Readdress this with the board, see if everyone's okay with me sort of getting a little bit more involved when when we actually get towards construction, so just bringing that up now.
Alright, just the last bit of the report here. So the finance team, this is the work they've been doing. With me and others, we meet regularly. To discuss the the state of our finances and make sure that we are are continuing to do the best we can to follow financial policies and procedures. So here are the activities that we are doing right now. We are working um heavily on the tax rate process. We should have. Either at your next meeting or the meeting after your annual tax rate certificate and. Tax classification hearing and hear about the tax rate and make sure we complete all the filings with the state, but we are well into that process. Um, even earlier this year than normal and we are in good shape. Okay, and then for financial monitoring. So this is straight from our financial policies. This allows us to meet a lot of the audit recommendations and make sure that we are tracking. And doing the things that would prevent fraud and make sure that we're transparent and keep folks informed about what we're doing. So the number one thing for this is cashbook reconciliations. Our town treasurer is fully reconciled through September thirtieth and the accountant through the end of August, with just a couple of counts remaining for September. So this is coming into audit season, the the strongest we've been with our reconciliation process. So that's a credit to our treasurer, accountant and and the oversight team. Our payroll withholdings are fully reconciled. This was another audit report finding. Um, the only thing that we are working on is stuff from prior to FY nineteen that needs to go account by account. So this is a best practice, certainly not a liability at this point. We are. Fully reconciling our withholdings and following the audit recommendations in that way. Accounts receivable. Um, I've directed Kelly to uh focus on this for the next week or two, just to get us up to the current timeframe, all the way up to quarter one. Uh, she has a few accounts that she needs to look at, but we should be able to report accounts receivable by the end of next week being um fully reconciled. And then ambulance receivables, you know about this one, we just finished writing off the. Uh, the old abatements and tonight you have a policy in front of you which would finalize our audit. Uh, recommendations to make sure that we are tracking our ambulance receivables responsibly. So that is the the full Q one report. Um, we post this online. We also post our budget versus actual and detailed. Report online. The detail report allows the town to see every dollar that we spend. So this is the commitment from the finance team to be as open and transparent with town funding as possible. So you can see all of it and we're reporting on it, so everybody knows where we're at.
Alright, I'm great. I mean, it feels like we're very uh thoroughly reviewed and in good shape. Do you? Not feel comfortable about um any particular item right now that that you haven't already brought up to us, or or do you? Do you see um, um, you know, uh. Mostly sort of known costs and revenues uh coming in, you know, for the foreseeable future.
I think without the CARES Act, we'd be in trouble. Which is the point of the CARES Act, supplementing to making sure, because we're spending a lot of money. On the COVID side to to fight COVID and meet state state regulations. Uh, that's helping us on the expense side, so our numbers are a little bit better than they should be because we're able to. Put some money on COVID understandably and and following process and procedure. I worry about revenue. I think the first quarter was good to us. I think with the restrictions you saw today and what's coming, um, it's gonna repeat what happened to us in the last quarter of last year, which is our. Our biggest moneymaker, if you will. So my biggest concern right now is is revenue. Um, it's always been that way. I'm conservative by nature, knew that when you hired me, but the. Um, the revenue is what concerns me. In terms of our process procedures, I feel like we're in really good shape.
And then just.
Hot, Ryan, how do you feel about the CARES Act? You think it's gonna get renewed again? Or or don't we still up in the air about that?
I think we'll know more after tomorrow. Think once the election's over, then I think the whole country will focus on what's next. Um, and I and I don't mean that in any political way. I just think this question has to be settled and then. We can focus on whether or not the CARES Act is gonna be extended. But if you judge what happened today with state restrictions and what is likely to happen at the federal level. I don't think that, I think it has to be extended if they expect us at the local level to operate the way we are. Otherwise, we're in trouble. We just can't meet the needs of our residents and services um in 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 this limiting way without additional funding.
Agreed.
There's a slight chance it's not all figured out tomorrow, by the way.
Yeah, you know, I'm an optimist.
So I guess we'll see what the sort of effect that has on on policy. So um, as it relates to extension of CARES Act, um, which is why I would bring it up in the first place, so.
Okay, both, both sides of the political aisle, because we do have to follow federal stuff that as local municipal officials. Have said that they wanna focus on. On the the CARES Act issue, not only for the individuals who are who relying on it for their for their individual households, but also. Towns like us, so. I do think it'll be a focus. I I'm optimistic that it'll be done by Thanksgiving.
Okay, well, it sounds good. I uh appreciate the update and I think we're sort of moving on to um. Uh, uh, you know, an appropriate segue into the fiscal year twenty-two budget goals.
Okay, so as part of the uh budget calendar, which we passed. And and one thing that I think has really helped put us in this good position is the board of selectmen and the finance committee. Telling us what they want the budget to look like, what the priorities are for the year. Where you wanna spend the monies if we have it or hold them back if we don't. Um, so this goal-setting process, and you know, I love my goals, but it really does help. Uh, set the stage for you getting a budget in front of you from me and from the departments that that you can manage. Without it being a, a cluster. So this start to the budget season really is. A conversation between me and you and the finance committee about. How you want me to instruct the staff and what your worries are, what your focuses are for the coming year. And I can bring up last year's. So you can see what last year's conversations translated into, which I think is helpful. So let me share this with you. Nope, that's the wrong one. Sorry, I've got like a thousand things open.
Just one quick note as you're opening it, we didn't have the COVID consideration when we did them last year though, too, just so we're clear.
Correct, yeah. Just a small difference. Okay, so. The budget guidance was to. Um, this is what I gave to the boards committees, anybody that files a budget with with us so that I can build my town administrator budget. So your goals were to try and eliminate free cash, which is the goal of every community. Um, to to reduce revenue estimates, which, you know, I I don't wanna do any back patting, but. You do that because of things like COVID and no one could see that coming, but conservative approach to budgeting is always smart if you can do it. Um, to meeting. All of the expenditure and saving goals. And then um talked about wanting to centralize the the pay process with some some wage parity. Which means we we told them not to include include their their wage increases. That that the board of selectmen, the finance committee and myself would handle that. And then you wanted to level fund or level service all lines um and only get requests that were impactful at the budget at the department level.
Sorry, Ryan, interrupt. Just wanna step back real quick to to three, the 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 second half of that there, just for for. Those who are somewhat somewhat new, no, three, go a little bit higher. And protecting the the town's bond rating, which is massively critical. It took us forever to get there. With what we've got, which is excellent. We've maintained it for a number of years here, but. Um, that's always gotta be sort of front and center in mind for us to ever get anything done, so that is that is really important. Um. Not to, not to uh forget about.
Correct, and then. Uh, your, you know, your budget priorities. So you wanted to find different sources of revenue, which we're able to do, especially with grant funding and. Capital on the capital side of the house. You wanted employees to feel supported. We were able to accomplish that without breaking the bank, you know, some strategic investments. And then road maintenance is where if we have any money, we spend it, which is paying dividends with some of the bigger projects and uh chapter ninety. Things we've been able to do. So this is, this is meant to be an initial conversation about. What you want twenty-two to look like, what are your dreams, your nightmares and um where you wanna go with the budget.
Okay, I guess I could start off. So, you know, we've we've made it priority to try to be, which you've already talked about, but just uh. As competitive as as we can um to, you know, surrounding towns or similar towns or however you wanna word it. Uh, specifically with employee pay and steps and and all that sort of stuff. How do you, how do you feel we? We are sort of in a snapshot of now of of, you know, where we are before we move forward with that.
So every single employee is now on a a compensation and wage plan that is easy for for everyone to understand. And we're, they were moved to an appropriate level. Based off of a market analysis of the surrounding towns, so we we do not leave the area in pay, but we are no longer. That the lowest level, which is good. So all your non-union employees are there, except for me and the police chief, the two employees that have contracts. So that's good. That includes the fire chief and the DPW director. So you can make decisions on non-union wages now in entirety. So you could increase the wage scale, decrease the wage scale, or move people up into steps like you would on the union side. Um, we do have an opportunity to to work on our our union side of the house with two contracts due this year. Uh, one thing that I did float with this board and and the union, so I'm not hiding anything. Is the potential to do less than a three-year contract, given the state of the economy right now. So um on the union side. I I feel like we are, we are strong, but we need to know what the negotiations are gonna look like in the next couple of weeks. So I am meeting with the DPW at the end of this month and have started meeting with the police already, so. Um, any guidance from you was, as we've talked about in the past, um, will be implemented the way we discussed.
Okay, and then we 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 should set a time soon for for us to discuss your contract.
Yeah, let's have lunch.
Anytime.
Quickly, before they shut the restaurants. It's not funny.
Okay, uh, well, so obviously we're not making any decisions tonight here, but it it seems like it's something we typically do, which is. Sort of start at what the level fund looks like, um, and then have a couple of other. Um, scenarios like a one percent and a two percent cola. Um, to to see how that has an effect uh on the overall operating budget. So I think that that feels like that's probably something um we should, we should do again, um, you know, and and. Sort of stick with it there. Does that that sound, sound good?
It does, and I, you know, so I'm hearing employees is is certainly an area. What what I wanna avoid is putting a budget in front of you where you're surprised. So let's say we had a hundred thousand in new revenue and it all went to. The planning board, for example, um, that might be a surprise because we don't typically increase the smaller departments like that. So looking to see, again, digging for your priorities in this coming year, you know that it's gonna be lean. It usually is and COVID's gonna make it worse, so we need to make decisions on. Where the limited resources we're gonna have are gonna be put, and there's gonna be heavy pressure on the schools as well. To um to not only stay open, but to fund it and without. I do believe that they'll be supported at the state and federal level, but they might not, and that's gonna fall heavily on our budget.
I guess the default is roads, right? So we probably don't wanna do anything till we get as many answers as possible, but. It feels like the will of the community anyway and and support of the community has been. That if we have some additional money that, you know, we we've sort of been responsible about all the other things we can, if there is some additional to. To be able to bite off um little projects and and whatever makes sense that we. You know, sort of get briefed on and discussed beforehand, feels like that's something that people are are always in support of.
Okay. So what I can do is is put together a document that you saw. Based off this conversation, which would kind of show some guidance to, we will be requesting um budgets at the end of this month. So at our next meeting, I could put. A goals draft together for you that you could discuss, change and vote on, if that makes sense.
It does. Do you need more input from us on this, you know, post meeting here to get back to you, or? Do, you know, there are, there are many, many items in town. There aren't many that I think we mess with. Overall, so we we've talked about a couple of here. Do you feel like you've got some direction to start?
I do, and it really would. And certainly send me an email or call me or do whatever, but just from each of you. You know, where you would invest and where you would cut, because those are two things we're gonna have to be talking about, so. Just helps to. It helps when I'm sitting in front of the department to say, listen, this is what we have, this is what our priorities are. Otherwise, they'll ask for everything like they should, any good department head should. If you focus, then they tend to focus on what's important to them. And then those requests come in front of you and you know they're, they're good, they're valid. Uh, last year you saw that with police, fire, DPW. They really limited it to the things that were important to their departments and that allowed you to make stronger decisions. So the more input we have. Um, the budget, better the budget's gonna go.
Oh, it doesn't feel like that too many people would would think it's carte blanche right now with the whole. COVID situation and just the current state of unknowingness uh in the world. But do you feel there are any departments, not even specifically here? Are, do people feel empowered at all right now because there is other revenue sources that? Um, you know, come from the CARES Act or whatever uh to 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 look for more or 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 not?
I don't. I think people are being very responsible. Um, asking for the things that they need for COVID, then there's restrictions on that. But there are some longstanding. Some issues within the department, shift coverage and the police and fire, road maintenance money in the DPW. Things that are are cut or limited each year because, you know, because of budget constraints. And then on the, the town department side, you know, we we do need another, probably one more employee to be fully staffed, but. You know, there's just no way that that can fit in, so. Um, we chip away at at hours here and there, and then knowing that we need to focus on keeping the staff we have as priority one. Is helpful.
Okay. Alright, we good with that item?
We are.
Okay, so we'll move on. Um, so we've got a four C, which is a request for support of the QRSD. Grant application, which which looks like it requires a vote?
Yes, so this came from. And um, some of you might be more familiar with this than I am, but Q Drug, which is an organization that's been working within the community. To bring awareness and prevention, drug prevention. So I talked to Chief Perrin, he's fully behind this group, believes that they do good work. Uh, primarily, they've been working as a non-funded entity, but this year they're trying to get some grants and to be more impactful. I think makes a lot of sense um in the COVID environment. These prevention efforts need to be, need to be high, in my opinion, so. Uh, what they're looking for is for the town to, it's it's not a big ask, but to support what they need. And they spelled that out for us. Here. And I vetted all this for you, so they want um health data, which is all protected. And would come from the schools mostly. They want municipal leadership involved in strategic planning, so myself and Chief Perrin have agreed to do that on your behalf. And um, they want support and talk about funding strategies or letters of support when it whenever they need them, so these are. Pretty basic. I'm looking to see if the board supports myself and the chief being involved in this on your behalf. And a vote uh to support it would be great, to sign this memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we 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 have, uh, it doesn't feel like it's a proclamation or anything. It's more of just a collaborative effort towards uh. You know, helping out an important um. Problem.
Okay, so if the board was in support, you'd be voting to. Allow me to sign this memorandum of of understanding on your behalf and execute its functions.
Make a motion, uh, then on behalf of the town of Hubbardston that we have. Sign the document that he's explained to us, showing our support. Of the QRSD uh Q Drug Grant Application.
I'll second that.
Okay, so any discussion? Okay, uh, seeing none, we will vote, roll call. Um, Dan. Okay, seeing none, we will vote roll call. Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you, Ryan. And next is another vote required for the item four D, which is the Ragged Hill Lot four and five deed approvals, which this process seems to be moving along.
Yes, so this deed I'm showing now is also in your packets, has been vetted by Town Council, has been vetted by the D two and their buyer's council. So we are ready to close this week on these two pieces of land, which is good. We moved this process along very well. So everything has been vetted. All that's left is approval of this deed and your signatures, which Bobby and I will make available for you tomorrow morning to get it signed. And then we will include this with a copy of the certified vote from the town, which will allow us to collect the money and for D two to close on this property.
Okay, can you can you send us a reminder to do that as usual?
Yeah, I'll send tonight. Is if we can get you in tomorrow morning, that would be great. If you can't make it, just let us know.
Will Bobby be there in the morning, or since it's voting day, et cetera, or what?
Yes. Well, I shouldn't speak for I'll be there. Bobby, will you be there?
What time will you be there, Ryan?
I'll be there at eight tomorrow.
I'll be there by nine.
Okay, how do you want to word the the motion, Ryan?
To approve the deed as presented.
For the Ragged Hill Lots four and five?
Four and five, yep.
Okay. I move to approve the deed for Ragged Hill Lots four and five as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote roll call. Dan, yes? Chris?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Sounds good. We are on to old business. I don't have any. Does anyone have any, or Ryan, do you have anything for this item?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. And you're up again at the town administrator report, which I think probably some of this is is repetitive.
Some of it is. I won't go into COVID again. I'll talk about our departments and the good work they've been doing. So because of because of a staffing issue and because of RRG's commitment to our community, and they have been a great partner, especially this year with some of the difficulties we've had. We're going to be testing a new online service in the assessing department. So this is it, you know, not to use a colloquial phrase, but a pretty cool service that allows residents to click on their phone or their computer, one button that allow them to chat with customer service representatives at RRG. You can also FaceTime, call. You can leave a voicemail and it goes right to RRG. So this would allow people forty hours a week of access to our assessing department through through an online service. Still a couple of kinks we got to work out in terms of phone forwarding and emails, but we think it'll be an interesting test to see if something like this could work in a town like ours, which would matter because we have difficulty finding trained professionals for the assessing assistant position and it's a way to potentially to save money years down the road. So we're going to test this program out and we'll be putting out a lot of information about it. I tested it myself last week and was very impressed on how easy it was. Picture everything we do here on Zoom, you would call about a tax abatement. You might have questions about the form. They would put the form right up on the screen so you can see it, walk you through how to fill it out, and then you can either upload it or mail it or drop it off at Town Hall and get that service completed. So in some ways, it's it's challenging because not everybody likes the virtual environment, but in other ways, a person will be available much, much more often for people to speak with them immediately. We're going to test that out and see how it goes, and I'll report back to you on that. Winter came early this year. Our DPW completed their first winter treatment, and that makes me sad, but they did a good job and the the board's commitment to having to making sure they understand the the winter readiness and and all of that went into it was very effective this year, given how quickly winter came. Hopefully, we don't have big storm events coming forward, but we are ready if we do. And then the town election is hundreds of ballots have been processed by the town clerk's office and her army of volunteers. They have been working like crazy to make sure they're keeping up with all of the guidance from the state and and the COVID nineteen impacts and are ready to go tomorrow from seven to eight at the polling place. I originally told you that we were expecting eighty-five percent turnout. I would probably add five, ten percent to that number. So we could see a record turnout here in Hubbardston, given how much interest there is in voting this year. Okay, financial management. Our finance team is engaging with Scanlon Associates for the last two weeks on our annual financial audit. Initial indicators show that we are at least as good as we were last year on our report. I will hold off on on any any news or forecasting until it's finalized, but we seem to be in good shape. We work very well with our auditors. They're very thorough, and you should get a good financial report in the next month from Scanlon on our FY twenty financials. You will have your classification hearing, as we talked about. It's currently scheduled for November thirtieth, so we'll know the tax rate by then, and we'll be able to set our classification. And then I talked already about our center school roof project and how much we've been doing recently to make sure that this project works smoothly. We talked about that as well. Another piece of good news, we got a another DLRT grant, which is going to fund the last chapter of our master plan, the implementation chapter. So we did allocate some money at town meeting for this that we will not need. So we will be able to return that back to the general fund. And then I have a our free cash certification came in, and I just want to walk you through that briefly. Can you see the free cash calculation screen here?
Yes.
Okay. So after all of the expenditures from FY twenty-one, which includes capital, the seventy-five thousand for the road projects, the final step of the town center project and the free cash we use for the budget, less our tax receivables, which is money that we have not collected from real estate taxes that we said we would. This is a number that's very similar to our last few years, so it's not different. And then one oddity here, this police detail line. So this is from the Route sixty-eight project. So we bill for the Route sixty-eight project, and we will receive this forty-nine thousand outstanding from vendors. However, we didn't receive it in time to be certified from free cash. So this gets deducted from our free cash total. So it's not a problem, except that we don't get to use it this year. We'd get to use it next year. It was really a timing issue, but that that is a big hit to our free cash. So the total amount of free cash we have for FY twenty-one is three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So this is less than we expected. I expected it to be somewhere around four hundred and fifty, and I will show you. The primary driver of the lower than expected number is from revenue. And we can attribute most of this, not all of it, but to to the impacts of COVID nineteen and a very slow year of permitting and growth. So this is the FY twenty revenue that we discussed earlier. And I'll show you. This is what we said we were going to bring in. This is what we brought in. So we said we're going to bring in nine point three seven million. We brought in nine point four three million, but that includes the hundred thousand in free cash that we use. So we really came in four thousand over what we said we did. And normally, we come in a hundred to two hundred thousand higher or better than we said we were going to do, which is what we've been doing to generate that free cash number. So we're not as bad as other communities that are facing revenue shortfalls from FY twenty, but we literally broke even in FY twenty, which is limiting our free cash number. So why that matters to you? And I can explain that, and I can explain that. Thousand ways slower and more detailed and will over the budget process. So we typically try to reserve a hundred thousand dollars to cover our use of free cash in the budget. We typically use a hundred thousand of free cash in the budget, so that leaves us a hundred and twelve thousand to fund other projects like road projects or capital. So there's a little limiting if we follow our normal procedures. It's a lot limiting. Unless we can get rid of using free cash in the operating budget, that will open up some room. But we also expect lower revenue levels in FY twenty-two. So it's going to be a tight year on the operating side and on the capital side, unless there's some type of change in in the environment. So I just wanted to give you a quick free cash update, answer any questions on that, and kind of set the stage for what's going to be what we all anticipated, a difficult FY twenty-two budget year.
So that's a pretty big delta with the expected in the four fifty range and the actual in the, you know, three twelve or whatever it was range. And we don't have all that many local receipts, so there's got to be something in there. Was there like a solar pilot that was included that shouldn't have been, or was there some other significant piece that just was in error, expected in there?
So the the fifty thousand from the details is in there, it just isn't. So the delta that you're talking about is approximately a hundred, right?
Yep.
So I'll show you, and we are doing it. Autopsy is kind of a weird word, but we are breaking it down as much as we can. So we understand, because I have that same question.
Yeah, autopsy is a very word.
All right, let me just get it up here. So we can all be talking about the same thing. All right, here we go. So our pilots, actually, we underestimated our pilots. So those those did help us. Our ambulance revenue came in a little bit under what we expected. Okay, so there's a little bit of money there. A really big whack, we took it here in our, and I've been talking to you a lot about this, is our department fees, so specifically our police fees and our Board of Health fees. So we are still receiving this money, so it's a little it's a little misleading to say we're not getting the money, but we weren't returning fees to the general fund, which is why I've been going through count by account to make sure that we're properly tracking our revenue and making sure it's going where we we want it to go rather than where it's going. So we will see big increases and halve in quarter one on our police fees. This is the admin money we collect for details and other permits. And then Board of Health, we discussed with them not putting all Board of Health permits into the revolving fund and using twenty percent of that revenue for the general fund. So that is like a thirty thousand dollar delta that we think we fixed. So that was a big part of our finance team project last year and why I'm so crazy about figuring out all of these little anomalies. And then building permits, we already have this much this year. So we had a really really off year for building permits across the board, not fully due to COVID. We were slow anyway, which is reflective in our new growth number. So we expect a big bounce back here, especially with all the permits that have been pulled. So that department fees plus the building department fees, we can call that about fifty thousand of that hundred delta you're talking about. And then the next section is this state aid number here. So if you look veteran and elderly exemptions, so this is literally a direct cause of COVID. We should be able to rely on this dollar amount to the penny, and we will get it, but it was slow to process and be put in, not from our fault, but from the state not having employees working on it because of the change in status at the end of the year. So that's another thirty thousand ish that that we should be getting, and we will get next year, but isn't reflected on our free cash number. And then lastly, veteran benefits. So we have been slowly decreasing the amount on the expense side because of our lower veteran benefit numbers over time. And that is now reflected in our on the revenue side. So you decrease on the expense side, but you also get less because you're not getting money back from the state. So those four things combined is where I believe that delta is that you're talking about, plus the plus the the police details money that we talked about. So it is explainable. It is something that we are targeting and in fixing and why I was off on my projection and why I don't think I will be next year, if that makes sense.
So yeah, that's so we can several of those sound like we'll receive them next year. So we'll receive them next year in addition to next year's as well.
Yes.
So essentially, assuming, you know, normalcy-ish, right, that we would actually double up on a couple of those.
Yeah, and and free cash is, it's a Massachusetts thing. So it's it's they're saying of all the monies you have, this is what you have available to spend, and we try very hard to to hit that number, especially in a small town like ours, so that we can fund capital and road projects and these other things, which is why I'm so focused on it. But it is up to the, like the police details thing, there's nothing we could do about that, but it has a major impact, you know, fifty thousand is is a lot for us in terms of capital. So had we been at three sixty, I think I'd feel a little bit better about the number. Do I think we're doomed at three twelve? No. We have our capital stabilization fund, which is back up to fifty. So we'll still be able to do the things we can do. It's just obviously easier when you have more free cash. And for those who wonder why I'm always talking about free cash, this is why. It's important.
Okay, so that's the report.
Yeah, I lost my place. Hold on one sec.
Oh, infrastructure.
Yeah, I got lost in a in a budget hole there. Okay, so you saw infrastructure. I've been working on putting together a capital report for you. We also finalized a grant through the Community Compact for digitizing our town records, so we can pull this, hopefully pull this off the capital plan. Not that I think it would be a priority to fund this year. But if we do get that grant, it would go a long ways to freeing up a lot of space in Town Hall and making sure that our records are accessible.
You're gonna hear us, Ryan. You froze up. Give another minute here to come back to life. I just texted him. Okay, Bobby, you're the host. You're muted too, I think. All right, just bear with us for another second here, see if he can jump back on, and then we will decide whether to carry on without him. We don't have too too much left. He hasn't, he hasn't texted back yet, so hopefully hopefully the McLean House didn't get vaporized.
Can you hear me?
Did you just run to the preschool or something?
That's my kids, it's beautiful artwork. Alright, I don't, I'm sorry, you lost me there.
So we were, no, no problem, good job pivoting, whatever you did to do that. Snatched like a tablet out of somebody's hand. Okay, so we were, if you want to continue on where we were at, you were you were getting to the infrastructure update or in it for the 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 report.
Yeah, just briefly, the. Two-one report as a full tally of our capital projects, just wanted to give you that report. And then for employee recognition, I just wanted to thank. The Parks Commission and Santa Berry especially. It's an all volunteer board and they they act like a, you know, a big town rec department. Applying for grants, fighting for for the open space in parks here. Really advocating for some of these bigger community projects, without that volunteerism and without a dedicated parks department. We wouldn't have, you know, things like a new playground to look forward to and and all this social distancing space that makes the town special, so I just wanted to recognize their volunteerism. And their efforts, they are unpaid like you guys and are volunteering their time, so. Appreciate them, I'm sure the town does as well, and wanted to give them a little bit of recognition.
Okay, great. So you we're good with the town minister report?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. So we are, we want to item seven, which is the policies to review, so these are. Five policies that you brought up during our last meeting that that we talked about having. The opportunity to spend some time with. To read and see if we had any comments for this meeting, so this is our our second read, do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay, so they are the information center guideline, they are the remote meeting participation policy. The mortgage subordination policy, the street numbering policy, and the ambulance billing abatement policy. Is there anything of of substance or? That we hadn't heard before that you'd like to say about any of these?
No, just briefly, the the ambulance policy has been discussed in the past and is a reflection of our conversation about what you want to see. For the write-off procedure. The remote participation, I think you can cut, it's a state law and it's redundant. The others are, there are no real substantive changes to them. It would be just sort of restating and and cleaning up old language.
Okay, well, I don't know if anyone has any comments on any of these, we can, we can. Certainly discuss any of them, or or if not, then we can, we get to a point where we can vote to 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 take some action on them. No, okay, well, so it sounds like maybe, Ryan, because there are four or five, four of the five. That that are going to be continuing on as policies and then one that's not, should it should it be two votes? How do you think the best way to do this mechanically is?
I would do a vote to if you want to to rescind the. Remote participation policy, and then you can accept the other four as presented.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, go ahead, Pat.
I'll make a motion to. Remove the remote participation policy. Or rescind it.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote, roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, and then we've got the other four.
What are we voting, what are we moving for, just to continue them as. They have been presented and we can do all four in one motion, is that the idea?
Yeah, I would say accept them as presented, because there are some modifications.
Okay. Make a motion to accept. The information standard guidelines. The mortgage subordination policy. Guidelines, street numbering policy. The ambulance billing abatements policy as written.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, is unanimous. We're on to item eight, which is appointments and resignations. We've got. One resignation, which is Walter Scott of the COA board, his. Letter indicated he's moving out of town regretfully and would volunteer if if called upon, which is great to hear, and then the three appointments are. Kenneth Horvath of the the Council on Aging Board, Mallory Seaman, the Land Use Coordinator, and. Susan Bregy of the Economic Development Coordinator. Ryan, you want to talk about any of these before we get into them, or do you want to talk about them as we individually go through them?
Let's do it individually.
Okay, so we'll start with the resignation of Walter Scott and the COA board, if we could act on that.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Walter Scott. On for the community, the board.
Seeing none, we'll vote, roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, let me thank Walter for his many years contributing to that, he's he's worked very hard and been very involved. Okay, so next would be the appointment of Kenneth Horvath to the Council on Aging Board.
Make a motion to. Accept the. Appointment of Kenneth Horvath to the Council on the Aging Board.
Ryan, you have some discussion you want to talk about there?
Just that. This comes as the direct recommendation from the Council on Aging.
From the director or the council, or what do you mean?
Yeah, the COA is is recommending this appointment.
So, okay. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris? Okay, unanimous, we welcome. Ken aboard, and next would be the appointment of Mallory Seaman as the Land Use Coordinator.
One question. Is anyone else, we've got someone else joining us, is this Whitney Freiberg? Is she is she asking to be recognized?
So Whitney is. Whitney is the chairman of our Economic Development Committee and is here to talk about. Or to participate in the appointment of Ms. Bregy.
Oh, okay. I make the motion to appoint Mallory Seaman to the land use as land use coordinator.
Okay, any discussion, Ryan, you want to add anything in this, I know you you've you've provided us with some information, if you want to just briefly?
Sure, so the. Goal in the the Land Use Department is. Has been to provide support to to all the boards, some small and some bigger, some professional capacity and some administrative capacity. And we really lucked out with Mallory, Mallory has all the experience necessary to assist these boards and. Just was it was a great find, I know you've you've heard me talk about her in glowing terms before. Christina, who was doing planning board work and assisting assessing assistant work. Is, and we knew this was coming, is looking to step back from her hours and pursue her. Educational goals. So this allowed an opportunity for me to appoint Mallory to a coordinator position. We decided not to make her a director, which is a different level of position, but a coordinator, which is a promotion and comes with a. A pay raise and more responsibility. The only caveat to this is we would need to supplement some of her work with minutes writing, but that is. Small price to pay to have someone. Really organize all of our our land use work, and for those who aren't familiar with land use, this is what allows us to. Drive economic development and help get rid of some of the frustrations and permitting and and other processes in town. So money matters for this. Just want to show you. Just a breakdown of. This is what we currently budget for our assessing assistant. There's a stipend for the ZBA, and this is what we currently budget for our building assistant, which gives us this level of resource. If we were to change this arrangement, and eventually the assessing hours would be reduced even more. Because because it's not needed, but right now we would keep it at that level in order to shore up and continue some projects we're doing in the assessing department. But overall, there is a reduction in cost here that would go even lower. In the future, and we can either reinvest that or use that savings to solve some of our budget deficit, so. This reorganization. Improves. Mallory's standing and gives her a promotion. Increases her pay, which makes us more likely to be able to keep someone as talented as her. It saves the town money and reorganizes the way we've been pushing or the way I've been pushing for a while. Way one land use department.
Thanks, any further discussion? I'm seeing it, seeing none, we'll take a vote, roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pat, you're muted?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. And we've got one more, we've got an appointment to the Economic Development Coordinator.
Want the motion first or the discussion first?
Might as well make a motion, I think, you know, there's no contention there, as long as we're okay with that and we get the discussion, we can, we can start talking.
Okay, I'll make the motion to appoint Susan Bregy Economic Development Coordinator.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Just a brief, so this position was created this year. It's a thousand dollar stipend and was the result of revenues that are coming. Soon from our Welcome to Hubbardson signs, a product of the Economic Development Committee and their work here. So the coordinator would be their agent. And primarily to start would be a person. Working on our town calendar, working to sync a lot of our events and and business work. To. Do tasks as devised by the Economic Development Committee and work on the Quabin Country website, so. This is pretty exciting, it's been a couple of years worth of work to try and get this position. To where it can really improve our town and get people to to see all the good stuff that our town is doing, and I know Whitney's here, I don't know if she wants to speak. I'm gonna unmute you, Whitney. Alright, no Whitney. Katie?
Hold on, there. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, the only thing that I want to add is a a another assignment that Susan would have would be to. Collect content about things happening in town and and submit them to. Large number of media outlets for us. And that would include newspapers, social media, magazines. And some websites through actually regional, so that more and more people can find out about the town. And that's something that I think. It is is a priority for for her to be doing as well.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Anything on this?
I would, I will just say that I invited her to our last part of the EDC meeting, she attended, introduced herself. Told us a little bit about her her experience or history and how she wants to help, she's been working with the. Senior Center quite a bit, and everybody had an opportunity to ask her any questions or like that, and I think it went very well. Katie was was at the meeting as well.
Yeah.
So how's the stipend work, Ryan, is it, you know, twice a year? Like like others used to be?
All of our stipends are paid in December and June based off of. Based off performance, the the idea would be to slowly increase this position as the EDC demonstrates revenue. To generate more revenue, that's the idea behind the EDC, so I met with her as well, she's super talented. For her, you can tell it's not about the money, although I don't think she would turn it down. It's more about the community and she likes the mission, especially the senior center and the. The EDC, so excited to have her, she's a good pick.
Alright, great, this is absolutely progress, so any further discussion from anybody? No, okay, well, we are at a vote, so roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff? You're muted, Jeff?
Yes.
Pat? Chris?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, sounds good. And we are at wage authorizations for Mallory as you land use coordinator, anything special we need to know here, Ryan?
Just the. The appointment was made by town charter, you need to be notified of the appointment. And the wage that's been authorized is F one, which will be a new classification on our wage scale. So for a land use coordinator.
Okay. So. So somebody want to make a motion to to approve this wage authorization?
I'll make a motion to approve the wage authorization authorization of Mallory Seaman.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded, any discussion? Okay, we will vote, roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. We're on to minutes, so we have one meeting, I don't know if Bobby or or Ryan, when you guys have that in front of you, just to remind us who was there, this is October nineteenth. Two thousand twenty, which was our last meeting.
Full board.
Full board there, okay.
To approve the minutes of the board of selectmen meeting. October ninth, eighth, two thousand twenty.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote, roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. We're on to committee updates, I don't have any, I've talked about town town center committee last time, all good stuff. Anyone have anything they want to add from any committee updates? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. So just one item, Ryan, we we were talking about bringing the. The board of selectmen goals back to discuss, not that we're gonna do it at this point now, but can we? Just make sure to to get that on our our next agenda?
Yes, if you give me one second. Tell you where I put it. Of course, I'm having downloading issues.
That My Little Pony tablet.
I have it on your December fourteenth meeting unless you want to move it up to the thirtieth or the sixteenth.
That's fine. Okay, any any other matters not reasonably anticipated that anyone wants to bring up?
Well, Dan, you sent out that email. A few days ago about a project that you had, you know, the very beginnings of, you wanted to talk about a little bit. I thought we were going to discuss that tonight, are we not going to do that?
What what do you, which one are you talking about?
The project with High Street?
Oh, okay, sure, I I I don't have any more information yet, was was sort of waiting for for some additional. Potentially, but the the information I have is is all from what I sent last time, which was. Whether or not, when we get to a point where we've got. A clear picture of what our budget's gonna be is whether or not we want to move forward with. Either or both of the schematic designs for Brigham Street and High Street, both in the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand dollars, one twenty-four thousand. One twenty-six thousand, and they would produce the same. That the twenty thousand at the time produced for the Town Center project, which is a couple of meetings, one with us. a couple of meetings, one with us, um, and a public meeting. Uh, and then a schematic design of what uh, their idea with input from the town might look like for some uh, redesigns of each of those roads with the idea of the apps, the the future funding of the actual work coming from others. Meaning the state or some other sort of program that that the town wouldn't necessarily fund. Doesn't have to be that way, but that's just the idea of of uh, piggybacking on. So um, you know, I I guess, you know, that's that's setting the table on it, Ryan. I don't I don't know if we've got any clearer picture or or where money would come from necessarily at that point to do either or both of those yet. Do you have anything to add to that?
So, so the the town center project is likely to return some money, probably enough to do this project if you combine it with some of the board of selectmen services money. I would certainly wait till the halfway through the year to make sure that both of those accounts are gonna be strong. Um, the idea being that the town center money could be repurposed to attach either Brigham or High Street to the the total town center design. Um, the really interesting part about High Street is it's definitely our public safety quarter connecting our two fire departments. So a prime candidate for Mass Works Grant to to fund the paving and improvement of that would definitely include sidewalks there because it would extend the walkability of our town. And then um, Brigham is the entrance in a a strong economic development corridor of town leading into the town center project. So both are good. If you were to fund both, you would need to find an alternative source such as free cash or um, you know, excess monies in this year's budget. Definitely couldn't afford to do both, but there should be enough money remaining in the the town center project to uh, to pay for a good chunk of one of these if you wanted to do that.
Okay, the one, the one benefit of doing them both, just just, I know it was in the the document that was sent, but there is a a a small five thousand dollar credit that the engineering firm, as we all would, is business people uh, provide if if both were done at once. So that doesn't necessarily help us fund it anymore. I'm just saying it out loud. So we, we do know that. Um, you know, I'm glad you brought this up, Chris. I forgot. Um, but as far as um, acting on it yet feels like a little early, but I'm I'm, I know personally um, all for having this discussion when we know we've got, you know, some known amount of money to do it for us to decide, you know, if to if we're as a, as a group, ready to move ahead with with the next step and and um, in the process. So anyone want to talk about this at all?
I I don't have anything specific to speak to it about. Um, you know, I like the idea. Sounds like we're not close. We're not even close to considering it yet based on what you and Ryan just said. So let's table it for a while, see what we end up for money to fund the project, and then we can restart the conversation.
Sounds good. So it's probably like December, January though, right, Ryan?
Yes, so um, I would say January, you you'll know.
Okay, well, that's not that far away, so. Sounds good. Okay, uh, any else, anything further on um, matters not reasonably anticipated by anybody? Okay, uh, seeing none, any public press question and answer? Any questions come in in any form, Ryan?
I see none.
Okay. I guess that's it.
Move to a June.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, roll call, Dan. Yes? Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay, eight oh four, uh, meetings close. Night, everyone.
Night, have a good night.
Night, everyone.
See you guys in the morning.